We were set to meet tomorrow, you and I. I prefer movies. Of your wife.
Trying to do the best Mr. Moon that I can, that's what I would tell you.
Okay, board members please. Board members please, okay, all right. I believe that we are ready, and thank you all very much. This is the presentation of the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee Annual Report. So it is a pleasure to have you all with us this evening. If you'd like to introduce yourselves, and the floor is yours.
Lights on. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. We are pleased with the opportunity to discuss our report of the Fairfax County's Adult and Community Education Program. With me this evening are Dolly Whelan, our Vice Chair of the Committee, she's from Drainsville, and other members include Jane Cruz from Braddock and Brian Graham from Providence, and I'm from the Mount Vernon District. And we have many of our ACE leadership and staff in the back if they want to stand up or raise their hands or jump up and down with joy. Great folks. I want to take a few seconds to congratulate Brad Rickel, the Administrator of the Adult High School Completion Program. The Adult High School Graduation Ceremony on June 12 was amazing. I don't know if the smiles outshone the exuberance or the energy level out-energized the smiles. It was a splendid evening, and many, many, many students were graduating. I want to thank our Vice Chair, Dolly Whelan, and the other members of our writing team, Jane Cruz and Brian Graham, and all the Community Education, Adult ESOL, and Adult High School Completion staff for their participation in the creation of the 2018 Fiscal Year Report. The Committee is extremely grateful to School Board Member, Mr. Young Moon, for his continued liaison connection to the ACE Advisory Committee. We very much appreciate his interest, availability, and guidance. The first part of our program is going to be the PowerPoint presentation by my colleague, Brian Graham.
Thank you, Lois. Good evening, members of the School Board Staff and other guests. The Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee is pleased to present its 2017-2018 Fiscal Year Report. Our Advisory Committee provides advice to the School Board regarding the education programs which are associated with adult education. These programs meet pre-K through 12 and broad community needs. The three components under advisement are the Community Education and Adult ESOL Components, which are funded through the ACE Fund, and Adult High School Completion, which is funded through the School Operating Fund. The ACE Fund Programs also provide registration and customer support to various FCPS Programs. ACE has a long history serving Fairfax County and provides support to K through 12 students in many facets, including the Behind the Wheel Program, recognized by the Virginia Department of Education as a superior program. More than 20,000 community members, including FCPS students, take ACE classes. Over the years, the programming has been aligned to complement Park Authority and Northern Virginia Community College courses. Adult ESOL also helps members of our community participate more broadly with a focus on skills for education and career advancement. The Advisory Committee believes that there is tremendous value to the community from the ACE Programs and urges the School Board's continued support. I'm going to briefly talk about each of the components under advisement. First, Community Education. Community Education provides wide benefit to our community, supporting lifelong pursuit of academic knowledge and interdisciplinary learning. It's broken down into four areas here. First, in the top left, K through 12 Programs, including Global Plus Language Camps, Test Prep for SAT, ACT, and TJ, math courses to prepare students for new levels, and Behind the Wheel Driver Training. In the bottom left is Career Development, which includes the new Accelerated Workforce Education, or AAW, Program, which is positioned as the 13th year for 18 through 24-year-olds, helping them bridge into careers, and also provides additional opportunities for learners of all ages in joining health, medical, business, and IT industries. In the top right, Adult Enrichment, provides lifelong learning courses that range from world languages and culinary arts to personal growth. And finally, in the bottom right, Apprenticeship and Trades, complementing on-the-job training for skilled trades such as carpentry, electricity, HVAC, and plumbing. The next component is Adult ESOL. The Adult ESOL Component helps members of our community develop practical English skills, including skills necessary for workplace readiness. These programs also provide a benefit to parents of FCPS K through 12 students, reinforcing English skills at home and enabling better communication between teachers and parents. FCPS also, as you can see on the right, administers the Regional Grant, which provides state and federal funding for Adult ESOL Programs in Fairfax County and in neighboring jurisdictions. The latest grant has a workforce system focus, supporting adults getting into post-secondary education, training, or employment. And last but not least, the Adult High School Completion Component allows for adults in our community to achieve a high school diploma or an equivalent. The Fairfax County Adult High School holds classes at, or classes are held, have been held, at Bryant, Hemet, South Lakes, and Woodson, and it allows students to meet current requirements for a diploma or the requirements that were in place when they entered the ninth grade. The other equivalents are the GED, which is the Computer-Based Examination to Demonstrate High School Equivalent Learning, and the National External Diploma Program, or NEDP, which is a competency-based assessment program where adults demonstrate mastery of 70 competencies, which has had some success with those who struggle with traditional testing. This program has been discontinued at FCPS as of this month, and current students in the program have been passed off to Prince William County for an opportunity to complete the program. Funding for Adult High School Completion is through the School Operating Fund Grants and Tuition Payments. To get into money a little bit more, the Community Education and Adult ESOL Components are funded through the ACE Fund. The chart here displays the revenue sources of the ACE Fund and its starting balance for Fiscal Year 2017. As you can see, the big pie piece there is tuition. It's the largest source of revenue for the ACE Fund, and it's followed by federal and state aid grants. While the School Operating Fund Transfer has been insufficient for the last two years, the budgeted amount is only 3% of the revenue for the ACE Fund. Our Advisory Committee met monthly to review resource and programmatic issues associated with the Adult and Community Education Programs. The topics listed here were the general focus of our meetings, reflecting the School Board's charge to the Advisory Committee. In summary, they were adherence to strong financial management and control, reflection of program response to grant requirements, programming that meets the needs of Fairfax County residents with a particular focus on Adult ESOL and Adult High School Completion Students, and finally, programming that supports the lifelong learning goals of the portrait of a graduate. And I would recommend that you take a look at our report. We have a section where we show the alignment of ACE offerings to the skills in a portrait of a graduate. As we reached the last few meetings of the school year, we reflected on our discussions and developed the following recommendations. First, that the School Board invest in Adult and Community Education by increasing the School Operating Fund Transfer to the ACE Fund for a total of $635,000. We additionally ask that the School Board looks at the transfer each year to determine what adjustments might be needed to support new impacts. The ACE Fund has been the target of decreasing School Operating Fund Support over the years. In Fiscal Year 2009, the ACE Fund Transfer was almost $1.7 million. And as you know, today it's $235,000, and for the past few years, that has not been sufficient. The ACE Program has undergone dramatic staff cuts, reorganizations, tuition increases, and many other changes in an attempt to make the program self-sustaining. The Advisory Committee believes that there is immense public value from ACE, not just to adults but also to K through 12 students, and that ACE deserves continued support. Second, we advise the School Board to request that the FCPS Grants Office search for additional compatible revenue sources to help the ACE Fund become self-sustaining. We understand that it is the desire of the School Board to reduce the ACE Fund's dependence on the School Operating Fund Transfer. The Advisory Committee believes that an endeavor seeking new revenue sources would improve the chances of ACE Fund solvency. Lastly, I'll conclude with justification, further justification for these recommendations. Of course, our report has much more detailed information, and we've already covered the first bullet point regarding the diminished transfer. The last point is that the Advisory Committee believes that it is difficult to expect ACE to, the ACE Fund Programs, to be self-sustaining when they are subjected to continual change. In Fiscal Year 2019, the Adult High School is being relocated from its current locations to the Plum Center and Reston-Hernan location. This move is displacing some Community Education and Adult ESOL Courses from their current locations. Even now, there is a lot of uncertainty about the new locations of classes for Community Education and Adult ESOL, and concerns about the desirability of the new locations or the facilities in these new locations. Tuition, as I mentioned, is the primary revenue source. We believe that these changes will negatively impact enrollment and therefore revenue, and continue to put the ACE Fund Programs in the firing line. Thank you for your attention. I will now yield the floor back to Ms. Lois Passman, the ACE Advisory Chair.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you heard me, but I thank Brian. So we have a wonderful technology addition to our committee. The theme of the Adult and Community Education Fiscal Year Report for Fiscal Years 16, 17 was the concept of the 60-plus years of a continuing legacy. For the ACE Report for Fiscal Year 2017, 2018, the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee seeks to strengthen the legacy by looking to the future of Adult and Community Education as a response to the challenges to its core being and the educational services it has been offering to a primarily vulnerable population seeking to achieve the American Dream. I am a second-generation American citizen. Both my father and mother were first-generation American citizens. My mother's paternal grandparents left the Ukraine in 1891 and immigrated to the United States of America. And I'm very sensitive when I'm reading what's going on in our country and depicted in the newspapers, because not so long ago, I mean, it's 100-plus years, but that's kind of recent in history. My great-grandparents and grandparents settled in Manhattan. My father's parents followed a similar path and settled in Manhattan. My husband and I were graduated from public universities. My husband from Rutgers, I from the City University of New York at Brooklyn College. My Bachelor of Arts in English and First Master's Degree in English in Secondary Education were from Brooklyn College. My Second Master's Degree in Educational Technology was from the local Catholic University in DC. Our son has a Bachelor of Science and a Master's of Political Science from MIT. He has an MD and PhD Degrees from New York University, and he fulfilled his medical internship and residency at the University of California at Los Angeles. Our daughter has a Bachelor of Arts from Lafayette College in Pennsylvania and a Law Degree from the University of Virginia. She was an attorney with Covington and Burling in Washington DC, and then a Deputy General Counsel at Microsoft. Her older daughter was graduated from Ivy League Dartmouth. Her younger daughter is at Duke, choosing Duke over Brown. So I share with you this many history, because our family has been so very fortunate and has been able to access and achieve the American Dream by educational opportunities. I am giving back and giving forward. I've been a volunteer on the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee since 1981. I represent Mount Vernon Magisterial District, which has a very diverse population. I believe in what ACE provides to enable the residents of Fairfax County to have the opportunity and access to contemplate, reach for, and to climb the economic ladder of the American Dream. Since 2010, the Fairfax County Public Schools Adult and Community Education Program has been the target of decreasing School Operating Fund Support. This required funding complements revenue from federal and state grants. The SOP funding, actually should be SOF funding, must provide a certain percentage of matching funds for FCPS to continue to receive the federal and state grants. There were also maintenance of FED requirements. For many years, School Operating Fund Support, a foray, was at the $1.7 million level. The Adult English for Speakers of Other Languages ESOL Program is the primary recipient of this funding. This funding enabled tuition to be at a level that was reachable for student customers who were working, raising families, and trying to attain the English language proficiency to enable them to contemplate, reach for, and to climb the economic ladder of the American Dream. The FCS Budget Team has continued to attack the Adult and Community Education Program. The School Operating Fund Transfer has been sequentially reduced. Since 2014, the transfer has been only $235,000, barely enough to meet the matching fund requirements. ACE is an amazing 60-plus-year program in which the students, our customers, are busy with life functions and busy acquiring skills to climb the economic ladder. This vulnerable population does not have the time or skills yet to be their own advocate. The ACE Advisory Committee performs and fulfills this important responsibility. The 28-2012 Great Recession and the loss of discretionary spending by prior student customers have compounded and challenged the financial stability of the ACE Program and made the program more vulnerable to FCPS leadership attack. The idea that ACE must be self-sustaining contradicts the mission of Adult and Community Education, which is, the Adult and Community Education Mission within the Fairfax County Public School System is to provide lifelong literacy and educational opportunities for residents of all ages through implementation of best academic and business practices. This mission is supported by the three components of Adult and Community Education. The Components fulfill FCPS pre-K-12 and broad community needs. The Course Offering Philosophy and Policy satisfies the customer age of 1 to 100. The Community Education Component provides an amazing portfolio of workforce training through its renowned apprenticeship programs, health and medical certificates, certificate courses, business and information technology certificate courses. The K through 12 children are engaged through K through 6 world languages and unique and challenging summer camps. Secondary enrichment provides multiple test preparation and workshops. The Driver Education Program has achieved recognition statewide and is a significant source of increasing revenue. And for all the other customers, the Adult Enrichment Program offers a plethora of long-time and new learning opportunities. The most recent is the Home Inspector Certification and Culinary Training in the World Language of the Recipe. Both courses are a new increasing revenue source. The Community Education Component, historically, since 1955, has been a welcoming home for the incubation, innovation, and enhancement of programs that respond to the ever-changing needs and interests and goals of the residents of Fairfax County as they move upward on the economic ladder of the American Dream. The Adult ESOL Program is also recognized for its statewide success. Multiple language skill access levels meet the divergent needs of a very diverse international community population. The English language training includes language focused on workplace reparation. Adult ESOL enables parents to enable their children via at-home communication and being able to communicate with their teachers. Adult ESOL sets in motion the opportunity and access to contemplate, reach for, and to climb the economic ladder of the American Dream. The High School Completion Program via the General Educational Development, or GED, Preparation and Testing, Fairfax Adult High School, and the National External Program Options, continue to have a major influence in helping residents acquire and achieve the high school credential. This important credential improves and facilitates the opportunity and access to contemplate, reach for, and to climb the economic ladder of the American Dream. Adult and Community Education is the forward-looking entity of the Fairfax County Public Schools and Fairfax County. ACE complements and completes K through 12. ACE connects, complements, and enhances the portrait of a graduate. ACE is the ultimate portrait of lifelong forever graduate. Adult and Community Education provides the opportunity and access to contemplate, reach for, and to climb the economic ladder of the American Dream. The Adult and Communication, the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee believes in the importance of sustaining the ACE legacy. The Advisory Committee believes that for all the residents of Fairfax County, ACE is the pathway to the future to fulfill the American Dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Passman. I think you are our longest-serving person on an advisory committee. So... We are very grateful to your long years of service.
It's been my pleasure, really.
And it is, and I believe I joined you all in 1988.
Excuse me.
I believe I joined the ACE Advisory Committee, I think it was in 1986, 87, 88, somewhere in that, because I served with you.
Yes, oh, I remember, yeah.
87, somebody said. So it is, it is a pleasure to listen to you tonight and to hear your recommendations. I have Mr. Moon and Mr. McAlveen so far.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to ask for my colleagues' indulgence as a liaison to the Committee and also someone who deeply cares about ACE Programs, that I have a whole bunch of questions on my notepad, and I intend to ask every single one of them. And you're not going to be able to stop me. Some of the questions can be perhaps answered by members on the Advisory Committee, and there may be some members, there may be some questions that can only be answered by our professional staff. And I do expect to hear from both Advisory Committee members and staffs. You know, thanking, thanking the members on the Advisory Committee for your dedicated service. I apologize that I have not always been able to attend your meetings due to the schedule conflicts, but whenever I attended, I saw how hard you worked for this valuable program in Fairfax County to remain as good as it can ever be.
You do have the best attendance of any liaison.
Oh, thank you. But I think, I still, I think there is still your improvement that I still should make in attendance. So should I stay as a liaison next year, I try harder to come to more meetings. First over to Mr. Graham, since you made a presentation, and you mentioned about cuts from 1.7 in 2009 to $235,000 for the last couple of years. What are some of the impacts, if you could describe, those cuts have had on ACE Programs?
Well, they've decreased, they've decreased the staff. I mean, it's gone from 85 to 55 to 35.
So how does a decrease in number of staff affect your programs?
The courses that they can offer, or the numbers of courses that they can offer. In other words, how many and the locations.
Could someone quantify number of courses that have decreased?
That I would have to go to one of the professional, you know, to actually quantify.
No, I have a lot of data. I do not have that data point, but I can certainly get that for you over the years. We do have all of the staff cuts, for instance. I'm sorry, I'm Karen Williams. I'm the Director of Operations for Instructional Services, and ACE is part of my responsibility on the, that's why I'm up here. So in 2009, we cut 12 positions, and those positions included many of the program specialists who create new courses, hire instructors, and monitor the classes. And then throughout the years, we've cut additional positions. So overall, we've cut 56 positions since 2008, Fiscal Year 2008. So it has dramatically decreased our ability to be responsive to the community's needs and to build new programming. That's a definite. And then also reliance totally on tuition. We haven't had a lot of opportunity to incubate new programming. So this year in particular, we've incubated two new programs, the Home Inspector and the AAW Program, to try to focus on our 18 to 24-year-olds. And again, we're taking a lot of the curriculum and things from our K-12 organization, so that's helping. So I can get the course information to you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Not sooner or better.
And, excuse me, I think that some of that information is also in the audit. So the ACE Fund has been recently on your list for audit, and that information is in that audit.
Mr. Moon, some of that information is coming to the audit, June 27. I would also add that those cuts have also resulted in the ACE not being able to be financially sustainable on their own, which has resulted in the need for budget transfers to them, and that there has been misinformation out there that it's because that they were not able to offer the classes and they were mismanaged. It was not, those cuts are directly related to the fact that they are not, they're needing that additional dollars, because as you'll see and you hear from the audit, there are no programs in this country that do not have operational support that are asked to do a lot of the things that ACE says.
So let me go to Dr. Duran, Dr. Duran. I think, I was trying to remember whether it was at the third quarter budget review or mid-year budget review, that there were at least several of us who did ask a question about that budget question. You know, compared to a county park, the park and rec program, they offer similar programs, some of the enrichment programs, that county board of supervisors provides overhead expenses for the programs to be run. And for us, the only amount of transfer is $235,000, and we do expect our overheads to be part of your entire budget. So we did ask for how much county board of supervisors are putting their rec program, park and rec program, as their overhead, and thus far, I have not, I have not been able to find our staff's responses to the School Board. And earlier today, as the last meeting attempt, I tried to get some numbers from our CFO, but I did receive some charts, which is very hard to comprehend. And so I do expect superintendent, so for you to provide us as soon as possible how much county board of supervisors has overhead supporting their park and rec program. And as a part of this ACE Program, we do have substantial, a substantial, substantial part of this ACE Program deals with K to 12 programming. I know that one particular number that I have is driver's education, where about 2,740 of our students have been benefited. But I do not have a numbers for all the programs such as Global Plus, Test Prep, and Math Fundamentals.
So on page 28 of the report.
Page 28? Could you tell us exam numbers? Sorry, I missed it. I read, I thought I read the whole thing.
So there is, there are, several of those programs are listed. We gave the information through April, but we can also update those through the end of the year.
So could you give me the rough number?
Okay, so the Fless and Global Program, so the Global Program in particular, 854 students were served this year through the end of April. students were served this year through the end of April, and then an additional group, probably 25 or 40 more. We also have a Flex program, and we've rolled that together with the Global. So again, 854 is a, is a good number for there. The secondary enrichment, keep leaning forward, secondary enrichment, 560 students participated, and that's through the, through the end of April. Looking, our ACE summer camps, we're anticipating that we'll have around 250 students. That registration is still open for this year. Driver's education through...
I have the number, 2,740.
Right.
So, so if I add 2,740 to 854, 560, and 250, that's about another 1,700, 1,727, that's about $4,400. $4,400 just for that program, 4,400 students with a $235,000 of a transfer. Is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I...
That's, I, I...
Yeah, the 235,000 specifically supports adult ESOL.
Adult ESOL, but we do not provide additional funding, funding for K through 12 program.
That's correct.
Correct, so I am looking at overall, overall number with $235,000. We are supporting just for K through 12 alone, about 4,400 students.
Correct.
That's like $50 per student.
Correct.
Let alone, there are, there is another, another $20,000 community members who's being benefited, the other taxpayers, the other residents, just like you and I.
Correct.
You know, I find, I understood when we made a cut from 1.7 all the way down to 235, because of a financial constraints the school system has been under. We have a little better, better budget, and hopefully that budget, that, 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 I may be too optimistic about this, hopefully, hopefully in the future, our budget wouldn't be as bad as what you had experienced back in 2009, all the way on to 2015, 2016 timeframe.
Correct.
That, that, when you see that, that pie chart you showed us, only 30%, what it provides is only 30% of your entire budget for the benefit of, I think, a close to 25,000 people.
Correct.
Asking for another, another $400,000, that is, I see as a recommendation from the advisory committee. That's not, that's not a huge number in my mind. I have a few more questions, but for my fellow board members that I'm gonna yield rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Hi, Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Lois and Brian, for the presentation. The first question I have goes back to Mr. Moon's remarks. Do we have a number for the total overhead cost for the ACE program?
So we do have the cost of the overall. So this year, we've worked very closely with the Financial Services Department. They've helped us kind of narrow that down. So we actually have three different pools that we're working with now. We have kind of the strict overhead, which includes our administrator and a few other staff, and then our, the group of specialists who help bring classes and manage all of the, excuse me, manage all of the instructors, and then just, you know, general supplies and things like that. So Cheryl Granzo, you might want to just tell me that I get this number right. Go ahead. Go ahead, and if you want to come to the table. There, the pool one, which is our true overhead, and Cheryl's gonna provide us that magic number.
I have to get the exact number, but it's approximately about $2.2 million. That's, that includes all our staff, includes our warehouse staff, our registration staff, myself, our operations, let's see, yes, and our, like I said, our registration staff. And our, our registration staff, let me say right now, is supporting the K through 12 programs through our summer school registration. So they've been busy working, you know, with the students, you know, in the regular K through 12 programs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, 2.2 million number. My second question is on the NEDP, which has now been pushed to Prince William. Was that a result of, I assume that's a result of budget cuts, right? And how many students are now being dislocated? Do we know?
I would say about 50.
Okay.
We worked out an agreement with Prince William, who has the program, to articulate those students to Prince William.
Got it, okay. And my third and final point is on the booklet. So this is a perennial conversation at this table. My, my recollection is that it's somewhere between 600 and 700,000, is that correct, the cost to print and send the booklet?
Brought that down to about 400 with postage.
It's good to hear the cost has gone down. But my advocacy would be to consider doing away with the booklet and meet people where they are on social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, music streaming, because I really, I, I think, my guess is 90% end up in the recycling bin, and I think we need to be more environmentally friendly in printing that many copies to go out to residents.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. We've actually looked very hard at our social media presence and, and working towards that. We don't have, again, I don't have a marketing staff to, to do that, so we have been asking the, the central marketing staff to help us a little bit more with that. I will say that once that catalog drops, we have a tremendous increase in the number of enrollment. We also have data from the direct marketing associations and LEARN, which is also an adult education organizations around the nation, that many, many organizations had gotten away from their catalog, and then they brought them back, because some of the students, or the students we're trying to reach are not necessarily in all the places that our young people are on, or even our, our 18- to 24-year-olds. So the AAW program, for instance, we're heavily marketing in the social media space, but the, the Facebook and Instagram and things like that, our followers are slow to come on board. So we do, I do watch that very closely, the enrollment. If I, if I don't see that spike each time a catalog drops, you know, I get a little bit worried. But we have worked very closely with the printer to make sure that we're using the most sustainable products that we possibly can, and also reducing the cost by pages. It's a, it's an, I've learned a lot about printing, but it's a 16-up, so we have to cut eight pages if we're gonna cut, so we've been trying to do that as well. So there, there is a market for both, I think, and it's actually been proven in the, in the nation that the printed catalog does still help. But I agree with you, at least for me, I would look for advertisement and things like that on social media, so we will increase our presence there. And I think the committee actually gave us that charge last year as well.
I, I hope it's unsurprising that the advisory, this has been a topic of the advisory committee as well, but at, at this point, there hasn't been a recommendation to get away with it. But there are certainly, and we have discussions about this, about recommendations for social media and marketing and things like that, that, that could be non-traditional. Of course, a lot of them have costs, targeting costs even more so. So, you know, you get one, get rid of one, you're gonna have to add some kind of targeted method to maintain that level of enrollment, and, and that's gonna cost almost as much, if not more than that.
What is it, 26 cents an issue? What was that number? Something was 26 cents.
Well, yeah, so I, yeah, I mean, I, thank you, Karen and Brian, for that, that information. That's helpful. I think, and, and obviously, your team doesn't have the capacity to do this, but if, if we are gonna continue with the catalog, we need to find a way to, to better target the audience that we're, we're targeting. And I know, I know, I know you're, you're focused on that, but sending, sending a catalog to millennials, I don't think is gonna pay dividends. Thanks.
If, if I may just follow up on that, because that was part of the discussion, and, but obviously, if you're not doing just like a bulk mail to everyone in the, the post office, basically, I think is how it works, the cost moves up a lot more. So there's definitely advantages to targeting and disadvantages, but the, the cost savings, I think, of moving, well, we're gonna have to find something novel and interesting to actually maintain that same level of, of interest from whatever that is, if we can't just kind of blanket everything, which is what we've been doing.
Thank you. I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Polczek, Ms. Corbin Sanderson, and myself. Ms. Schultz?
So I feel like it's Groundhog Day all over again. I, you know, I really appreciate this report, but I gotta, first, I want to delve into, because I was not following Mr. Moon's numbers, I'm looking at the, if we could bring up the chart on page, it's my PDF, page 29. Can you walk us through again, because this notion, if you slide all the way down to the bottom of the chart, this notion that at the bottom of the chart, on the right-hand side, right-hand column, that 18,424 customers, if you will, are ACE customers, but 19,364 are somehow FCPS students? You're gonna have to walk me through in the rows above, which 19,500 students that are FCPS students you're saying are taking ACE classes?
No, so that line, very specifically, is our support, our logistic support that we offer to the Summer School Fund. That's a separate fund. We register, we help them register their, the students for the summer program. And so last year, or up, so we've registered, we registered as of, in each year, we register a certain number of students. So 28,000 in the year before, 19,000, so...
Register them for what?
For summer school programs, or, so this would be for your academic summer school. So it's a separate fund, but we provide all of the backend support. So students who register for summer, so say they're taking calculus as a new course in the summer, they can't, they register...
So the personal finance class that's taken in the summer, you guys are...
Re-register.
But you're just, it's, that's just the vehicle to get them registered.
That's correct. And that's, and that's, that is just a reflection of our service. So the numbers above the courses that...
So 18,424 people are taking ACE classes?
That was through the end of April. So we re-average about 21,000 registrations per year, and Mr. Moon's comments were related to our K-12 students, which Behind the Wheel, Global, Summer Camps, those are the things that are...
So that's what I'm asking you to walk me through, is of the people that are represented in the numbers that are above, and let's just use, just to make it clear, just use the right-hand column. So 2,251 driver's ed, those are all students?
Those are all students.
All FCPS students?
Yes.
That are taking it as a part of their curriculum in school?
No. They sign up for the driver's ed.
Right, so how come they're not taking the driver's ed in school?
Behind, they do take, they take driver's education as part of their curriculum, but the Behind the Wheel program is a separate program that follows the Virginia Department of Education guidelines.
Right, and that's what they could take in the community, or they could take through this.
Correct.
And there's plenty of chances in the community to take it.
We do have competitors in this space, definitely.
Right, I know. I've put three children, three of my four children through the competitors. And, and, and I say that because my question is, why is it incumbent upon us to provide adult education resources to provide a course that's already available in the community? And when you said home inspectors, the first thing I did was go to the web, and our home inspector certificate course is $999. The first place I found it online, it's a self-paced course with lifetime updates to software, is $695. So the, the nature of underwriting something that's already competitively available through the free market in public, never mind offered by Northern Virginia Community College, the Fairfax County Park Authority, local community, you know, classes, et cetera, why are we undercutting the free market and then also subsidizing it?
We can speak to the Behind the Wheel program in particular first, and to your second point, I can address that as well. So this is George.
My name is George Schumake, and I know many of you. I run the Behind the Wheel Driver Education Program. I work a lot with the K through 12 side, Carrie Reynolds and Liz Payne with PE and Driver Ed. I can answer directly on why you don't want to go necessarily towards the commercial driving school side, and it's because of quality of education, quality of the training. Department of Education puts out their crash data on a, pretty much a yearly basis, you can go and pull the numbers. And basically, they put out a, an amount of how many crashes students have that go through any given program. That's commercial, public school, private school, you, you name it. We are way below, one of the top in the, in the state. I think our crash ratio, last time I pulled all the Fairfax County school numbers out, was right around 2.0. That means two students out of every 100 that go through our program end up getting in some kind of crash within the first year. The state average is four. The commercial driving schools is well over five. And you can find that on Department of Education's website.
But those are, that's, that's averaged for the state, that's not necessarily here locally.
Well, you...
You know, for, I mean, and I say this with all due respect, I mean, you know, there's one that's run completely by police officers. And so, so this is, this is the problem, this is the problem that I have, and this is not to undercut any of the good work that people are doing, because everybody is well-intended, but it does become a question of what, where does the money go? And when I look at the fact that there are 18,000, basically 18,000 customers, if you will, 18,500 customers through this point, if you take your budget and you divide it by 18,500 customers, you're coming up with something like north of, north of $500 per person that we're spending to educate them on whatever it is we're spending. So total, total budget and your total number of customers, you're around $500 a customer.
I do want to just mention that that's tuition-based, right? Those customers are paying a tuition. We're not subsidizing them.
Of course, we're...
Okay.
No, of course we're subsidizing it, and we're being asked to subsidize it at, at an even greater rate. I'm taking your budget and the number of customers you have, and some of these courses, and this is a conversation for those who were on the previous four-year board, that we had at great length, that there are some courses that you provide that are real moneymakers. ESOL, Adult ESOL is a huge moneymaker. Driver's Ed is a huge moneymaker. There are other courses, I don't know what the health and medical and secondary school enrichment, and I, I don't know about all these other courses, but that are operated at a great loss. And the board discussion at the time was that you all have to look at the mix of what you want to offer, and you have to figure out, if you want to offer some of the things that you're offering at a great loss, because there is a, you know, maybe driver's ed is a good example, is that, that there's a worthy statistic that makes it worthwhile keep, keeping that component, but if that we're losing money, that you would have to structure your offerings of what you're making a lot of money on and offer more of those so that the balance sheet would work out. And it seems like what's happened is, is in the time since the time that we had that conversation, and I'm gonna go off the top of my head and think, I think it was maybe 2013 that we had this conversation, that we're actually in a place where we have, not only haven't done that, even though there have been cuts, now we're coming back and asking for more to the well. And I appreciate, Mr. Moon, you're saying that, and you're running the statistics your way, that it's $50 a student. It isn't $50 a student. You have to take the overall budget and what we're offering and what we're being asked to subsidize, and you can't just ask for the amount of subsidy, you still have to take the overall budget. And we do this with, for example, our food nutrition services. We're not underwriting the food nutrition services at greater amounts because they're offering things that they're not making money on. We, we agree to a subsidy, and then from that point forward, it becomes self-sustaining. So the question is, what has happened in between the time that we had that conversation, which is, look at the things that you can make money on, decide what's worth, even if it's competing with the, the, the private market, that's worth keeping because there's a good story, a good statistic that's better for our kids, but that doesn't apply to all the rest of the classes. So what's happening with all the rest of them?
Just very quickly, since 2013, under your advisement, we look very closely at our financial situation, and all of our classes... our financial situation. And all of our classes, all of our sections, and the audit will go into this even greater detail, actually are self-sustaining as far as paying for their instructors, paying for their, the cost to have a building coordinator on site, and for people like Jarred who run the programs. Where we're falling still short are some of the cost drivers, such as our overhead, which we talked about. And prosperity also brings increases in employee benefits, and, and the, the cost of, of doing business, some of the cost drivers that we're up against, including, in Jarred's program, we're a fleet of cars for the Behind the Wheel, and that fleet has to be maintained by Fairfax County, and the Fairfax County rates are applied to us, so we do pay for those. So the $235,000 that we get from the operating fund does help us maintain our level of effort with the Adult ESOL classes, but there are no, well, in my opinion, as the director of this program, since 2013, we have taken every opportunity to be as efficient as we possibly can, and to offer classes that people want and that they come to. So we have been very judicious about canceling classes that are under-enrolled, and combining classes, and bringing things, you know, forward to management before we cancel them. So for the first
But we're still looking, but we're still looking to increase the subsidy to 650,000.
Right, and part of that is to help us offset the cost drivers that, that we have around.
So, so, I mean, I, I mean, it's clear where, where I stand in maintaining the conversation from, from 2013, which is looking at the balance sheet of what's offered through Northern Virginia Community College, through Fairfax County government, in terms of the part takes, and in terms of what's frankly offered, and Ryan, you were going a little bit there, I mean, there's a lot of certification, certification programs that frankly, that are self-paced, that are offered through, you know, Southern New Hampshire, whatever, whatever, online, that are much more flexible to the needs of, you know, of people, and that we can't do, we can't be everything to everybody at all points of their desired education, you know, expanded education. And the places that are good stories, the places where we supplement ESOL, I mean, look, I, I can't drive two miles in Fairfax County without seeing a sign that frankly, a lot of free ESOL classes that are underwritten by, you know, community groups, churches, et cetera. So there's, there's a place for us in this, but if we're at the tune of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're making a decision to do this instead of something else, unfortunately. The, the reality is, is that on the balancing scale, you know, do you do this, or do you do early intervention preschool for at-risk four-year-olds? There, there are some places where there have to be decisions, and, and I, I think it's, I think these are the courageous conversations this board has to have, so thanks.
Okay, we'd like to, we'll spend maybe about 15 more minutes. I'm hoping that people will be succinct, because we are an hour behind. Ms. Palchak, and then Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Evans, Ms. Darnik, and myself. Ms. Palchak?
Thank you. I will try to be succinct. I appreciate you being here, and I think I've shared before, I started my career as a flex teacher, so I know that we do a lot to support students as well. Some of my questions have been asked, I had a couple of others, and this may be coming in the audit, I have not seen the report. Do we know how our funding for ACE compares not just to, you know, the county programs, but to other similar districts with similar programming?
So the auditor was able to come even to the ACE Advisory Committee, and they asked actually that same question. So there is some benchmark information in the audit. As far as I understand, I was able to see a draft, but it's, you know, it hasn't been presented yet. They were able to get more information, Mr. Moon, around the Fairfax Park Authority, and how they're funded, and their mix between operating versus tuition or their revenue fund. And then there are a few other school districts that they were able to benchmark us against.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to seeing that. Another question, and here I, I will disagree a bit with my colleague. While I do think that there are many instances of community, community programs, private, public, nonprofit, that do serve our community, I, we are a public school system, and I think there are some programs that we do very well, and that provide an important need to our community. One of those being the Driver Education Program. Like, we're an excellent program. From personal history, I, I know when I was in high school, not only was it the most affordable program for someone on free reduced meals, it was also the most rigorous program. I had friends, I refused to get in the car with them. They paid at least three times as much, for some of them, three hours at most, behind the wheel. And, and I think that it's a disservice to our community and to our kids. So I know that you do an excellent job, and they fill up very quickly. I guess my question around that, and I know it's a little bit difficult to look at this chart, knowing that the last column only goes through April, so it's not a complete comparison. I, I am, overall, it seems that there's a slight reduction, and we're really only seeing two full years, but a slight reduction mostly across the board in our enrollment. And I was wondering if you could speak to some of those factors behind that?
So, we've maintained our enrollment at a certain level, but we have seen some decreases over time. And I do think that we have additional competition from different groups, as Ms. Schultz mentioned. We also have limited the number of sites that we are offering classes over a similar period of time, just as an economy of scale. So I do think that we need to look at possibly using additional high schools to bring in additional classes and additional spaces in the, in the evening in particular. So it is a just a little disturbing trend, and it's one that the ACE Advisory Committee keeps us on our toes about, and asking each, each month when we meet. And each program specialist does do a report each month to see kind of where the new customers are coming from. We do have a lot of customers that come to us new. We have really good customer service satisfaction surveys and things like that. So I do think increasing the number of locations will help us in the future.
And I guess what I'm wondering is, right, is it because of the reduced fund? Is it because, I mean, we've grown in numbers as a county, obviously. We've also grown in traffic and the ability to get around.
Yeah, I do think some of the issues, and it was in the report last year too, is just around marketing, making sure that we are hitting those target markets with the right types of, of marketing tools. And I really, we don't have, you know, around the a lot of very specific information, but as far as Fairfax County goes, I do think location will make a big difference.
Yeah. So, and I'll try to wrap up, and I do, the, the question about the targeting mail, I, I had a similar question, so I'm glad that you were able to provide the nuances and some versus the other. And, and I agree, whatever you decide, you will need a budget. Marketing to do it well does require time, budget, and expense. So I don't know if, if that's possible to, to see for the future, maybe, you know, A, I would love to know how much of your time and budget goes to the registrations for other programs, that would be really helpful. And B, you know, what, to work with staff, or maybe our communication staff, to maybe outline a communications plan, and, you know, an approximate budget for that, so that that's something that we can look at, and even if that requires some outside support to understand how to create the plan, and, and really what it would take to make it effective and aligned to the goals. So figuring out what are our goals, and, and how do we, how do we fund that? So I appreciate all of your work. I do, I, I know in the past, it has, it seems like the easy thing, you know, adult education, why, why are we spending money there? But I, I do think we need to figure out where their important services, where especially their important services for kids and for their parents and families, but also where, where we are overlapping and where we're not. So, you know, if we're able to understand how your ESOL program kind of fits in with Community College, with Literacy Council, with other programs, I think that would help us better understand the landscape, and, and where there's a need, and where ACE or other programs are fulfilling that need.
We definitely have a lot of that information. This is the ACE Advisory Committee report, so I didn't, I don't have that right now, but I can certainly talk with Dr. Duran and others, and we can provide you additional background on that. We do know all of our partners in the community, and who's offering what, and what we do different than they do, and, and all of that stuff, particularly about Adult ESOL. So we do focus on that career readiness, work readiness component, that some of the other organizations just don't have the capacity to do. Our teachers are trained, and they're, they're ready to help move students from where they are to where they need to be. So we do have quite a lot of documentation around that, so we can provide that through whatever means Dr. Brad wants to do that.
Thank you. Thank you to the committee members who are here and who've supported it.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. And thank you, Lois, for your dedication, not only to ACE, but to the Mount Vernon community. I am forever grateful. Got a couple of questions, and then a statement. The NEDP, the 50 students who are now going to Prince William County, do we know where they're coming from in Fairfax County, and if they have come from one geographic region versus another? And are we at all concerned, because my gut says I'm concerned about how they get there in transportation?
I think Brad's going to be able to.
Sure. Those learners are from all over the county. NEDP is, that's, that's the closest offering of that program. So it's a little complicated. Any entity can offer the NEDP program. So for example, in the District of Columbia, there are churches that have adult education programs that have set up a partnership with NEDP. For our purposes, the closest NEDP program is Prince William County.
No, I understand that.
And so.
But is there a cluster of students in Fairfax County? So for example, if there are 50, are there 10 from, you know, or five from each of the districts, or?
I would say it's all over. I mean, I could, I can get you the specific information as to where those learners live. I don't have that.
That would be helpful, because I don't want to see a disproportionality of one certain, one region over another being impacted.
Sure.
And if we need to do something, we should. You know, the ACE program and the literacy, focus on literacy is especially important to me. From a sentimental point of view, my grandmother, who was a first-generation American married to an immigrant, taught adult literacy for the last 25 years of her life. And so I understand and appreciate the dedication to it. But the ACE program has many other course offerings, and I was wondering whether you had done kind of a Venn diagram, which says the major providers of quality programs in Northern Virginia, being Parks and Recs, ACE, Northern Virginia Community College, George Mason, and then some of the larger faith-based communities. And if we made a Venn diagram and looked at all of the offerings provided by ACE, and then overlaid where others are offering those services, in the spirit of one Fairfax, are we doing this in the most efficient manner? So are we creating competition between Parks and Recs and ACE? And if so, then maybe we should be looking at partnering and doing a job to get, collaboratively, similarly with Northern Virginia Community College and other educational providers. And so my question in summary is, have we done, obviously, there's a needs, because we see the enrollment, but we see enrollment numbers going down. And is there, are the enrollment numbers going down because there's a diminishing need, or a more competitive environment? And if it's a more competitive environment, are we being most effective in providing the service, or should we go ahead and partner with others and recommend to our constituents that they use those other services?
So I can answer that to some degree. So in particular, Fairfax, Parks and Rec, and ACE, we work in conjunction with each other to make sure that we do not overlap services, or that we, we do not have any competition between the two programs. As a matter of fact, their registration staff has our catalog, we have their catalog, we advertise in each other's catalog. We made a purposeful decision several years ago to offer lanes. Basically, we have a, a letter that we, we review each year to make sure that we don't have, that we're not competing for the same, the same customer, if you will, and actually helping each other. When we hear that something is really a need in the physical education area, or in the Parks and Rec area, we make sure that that, that community knows that we, that they need to go over to the Parks and Rec in order to get it. Again, Cheryl Granza and I meet once a year, at the very least, with the Parks and Rec staff to make sure that we're aligned there. We also look very closely at the Northern Virginia Community College offerings. We have lots of, you'll hear from CTAC later today, but we have lots of conversations with the Community College system, making sure that we don't overlap each other's programming. And if we do, what's the value of one over the other? So entry into Adult ESOL, for instance, might be better served in our program. And then when, when students are ready, they can transfer over to Northern Virginia Community College. With Adult ESOL, we've looked very closely at the different partners, as I mentioned, so we can get you that information. As far as competitors go, each of the program specialists is required to know what the competition looks like, particularly for the commercial entities, so the different Behind the Wheel programs and things like that. So Jarred is on top of who's offering what, where, making sure that we, that we have a competitive price, and that we can get these students into our program if, if possible. So yes, there is a bit of competition with some businesses, but as far as, as far as government agencies, I feel like we're in partnership or complementary to them, as opposed to in competition with them. And I think each of those agencies would agree with that. The Department of Family Services, for instance, sends us clients, right? They send us clients to become better customer service, we have a customer service track, where they come and take classes with us, and Department of Family Services sends people to us. So we, we've done a nice job, I think, over, particularly since 2013, making sure that we don't have overlapping services. We probably could do better as far as the commercial space. I don't think we spent as much time making sure that we're not duplicative of commercial things, but they're actually our competition also, so.
And there were a number of courses that went, that went, that went to Parks and Recs at that time.
Right, and so we did actually shift some of our courses to Parks and Rec, and vice versa, to make sure that we were aligned. And we continue that today.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you so much for your report and for all your work throughout the year. I am sorry that we're strapped for time, because I, I do have quite a few questions. I'm gonna try to narrow it down to the, the most important. With the displacement from the Plum Center, I had asked staff about this, and was told that very few ACE classes were being displaced. Do you have different information on that? In terms of how, how many classes are being displaced?
From the advisory committee perspective, we didn't have exact numbers. And I think a lot of the concerns were because there was so much uncertainty. So even, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you asked the question, and, you know, we knew things were moving, but we didn't know how much or where exactly, and how much would be displaced.
I think we did get, I, I don't know if I have them here, do you have them?
I believe I sent to the board the re-clarification of the space modifications at Plum.
But, but I'm asking about the classes that are being taken out. Do we have a number on that?
Karen can share the numbers that she shared with us.
Right, so I did share some information. Again, this is fluid. We are going to be co-locating at the, at the Plum Center with the Adult Completion Program. And we are in the process of making our master plan. The real raw numbers, last year, we had about 820 classes offered at the Plum Center. We have definite space for 200, 341 classes for next year, but we also have additional space at Piment that we never had before. So Piment, when they combine the, so some of those classrooms will take up, will relocate some of our courses to, to Piment.
So you're going from 820 at Plum to 341 at Plum?
So definite space at Plum, those are rooms that are dedicated to the ACE program. We can, we'll be able to easily fit 341 classes, but then the master schedule is still under development with Adult Completion Programs. So as soon as that's complete, I, we're thinking we'll maybe lose a fraction of the, of the classes at Plum. We also moved staff out of the Plum Center into Piment to make more classrooms. And so that, once that construction is complete, it's actually gonna be a nice. And so that, once that construction is complete, it's actually going to be a nice, probably a synergy there that we haven't seen in the past. Right now, it doesn't feel great, right? Because we've been at the Plum Center, we've only offered adult community education classes there. We'll have to get used to the new, the new normal. And once the master schedule is done for the adult completion program, we'll know a little bit more.
The advisory committee is, was concerned, particularly because the Plum Center is the largest, source of revenue, about 40% of the-
The total revenue. So we made about $2.2 million worth of our revenue from the Plum Center last year.
Well, and from my point of view, because I represent Mason District, you know, my constituents are concerned that they will not have access to those classes if they're moved someplace else. And so that was part of my asking for information. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm still seeing a, a big disconnect between going from 820 to 341 to saying that there are only a few classes being moved.
Well, so I wanted, you know, I definitely wanted to provide you with the information that we have. So at the Plum Center, we have dedicated space. The adult and community education still has dedicated space there. We have, and we will work with the other program moving in to make sure that we can offer as many classes as possible at the Plum Center. So it's, it's a fluid situation.
Well, I guess I would, I would like to get a final tally when, when it's available on how many classes actually-
Excuse me, Ms. Evans. Hi, Rich Polley, I'm the Director of ESOL Services, and so we, we work, we've been working on this issue as well. I just want to say that right now, it's, one of the uncertainties is the enrollment during the daytime at Plum Center for our Fairfax County adult students. So we'll, we will see, so we have dedicated space right now for Fairfax County adult during the day and in the evening, but we may not need it all during the day. During the evening, we think we will. There are many more students who will be attending Fairfax County Adult High School during the evening, but during the daytime, it's, we're still uncertain. So we will, we will know.
Well, whenever we have a full picture, I'd like to get that back. So I may have missed this, but when we're looking two pages before this, FY 2018, it says that the transfer was 844,000. How, I thought we had capped it at 235.
What page are you on?
I'm on page, on paper, it's page 26. It's two pages above this one, this Malverie, if you could go.
2009 through.
Right, nope.
You went-
Yeah, right, right there. It says that our operating transfer in the, in the current fiscal year is 844,000.
So if you recall, last year, the ACE Fund did not meet its revenue targets, and we were at the end, well, we were, it's just the way it's represented, right? So last year, we did not meet our, our revenue target, and so the school board at year, at the year-end adjustments made the ACE Fund whole last year.
So, okay, so last year it wasn't 235, or this current year, rather, it was, it was 844, and so, all right.
And that's to close the deficit that we had.
I think I mentioned that in my remarks.
All right, then I, I'm sorry, I missed that. That, that we are-
What we can count on was the 235. What we ended up needing was additional money to close the budget gap.
So we closed, so we closed the, the gap for you. On the, well, a couple of things. You mentioned that the GED is still the only high school equivalent now. I had thought a couple of years ago they were looking at something else, and that didn't happen.
They did. VDOE did not accept those bids, so GED remains the only HSE for Virginia.
Okay. Well, going back to, and, and I know we're, again, strapped for time, so this will be my, my-
There's also a Spanish GED for learners as well. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's all right. So in terms of what is self-supporting and what is not self-supporting, your adult ESOL, it says is self-supporting, correct? And so just, could you give me an overview of which of your programs are profitable and which are not?
Earlier, I answered the, this question in a different way, but we do, all of our programs can support themselves as far as the instructors and the program specialist. Where we have trouble across the board is with being able to pay for all of our overhead costs. So once those are spread across, the overhead does make each program, well, not each program, but some of the programs have a harder time meeting their, their targets. So, and I can give you additional information on a follow-up. We have a lot of, we have a lot of budget information that we provided to the internal auditor in order for them to make, because their main question was this self-supporting question that they were trying to answer.
I would be happy, I would, I would like to see that.
And I think that next week, we should have-
Ms. Evans, there's going to be a lot of that detail in the Auditor General's report. That's part of their analysis, which you're asking, and you'll be able to see that. It's like a 20-page report that outlines a lot of what you're asking.
Okay, I, I would appreciate seeing that. And then lastly, I will simply agree with you on your, in, on page 10 about needing to be, the mindset about everybody going to college, which is a great mindset, but at the same time, I do think we need to be clear that there are some, some very high-paying jobs that people can, can get if they get the right training. And I, I'm sure we'll, we'll be talking about that a little bit later as well. So thank you.
I'd like to respond to some of your questions, and this is just my personal, but there are some folks on the advisory committee who were very, we use the word concerned, but a little heavier than that, about changing the, what's the word that I want? When the ACE, when the Plum Center for Lifelong Learning opened in '09, it was very exciting because it was what became the home of adult and community education, community ed and adult ESOL. And the committee was the last to know that all of these changes were being proposed. And we're still very concerned because there's something very special about the Plum Center for Lifelong Learning, and that's being kind of modified now. Another piece of the, of the story is that Piment has the, and I've done a position paper on it, and we're sort of moving that along through the system, but Piment already has the day program for adult high school completion. But Plum is being suggested for the evening function, when it could just as easily go to Piment. And there are some of us who have very strong feelings about that.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Passman.
So we're going to be meeting with Mr. Duran next week. We have our last meeting of the year, which we had to make later in the year because we were presenting later in the year. We usually use the third Wednesday, and that's the meeting that we use for developing the draft of the school charge. So there are some of us who have very serious concerns about all of this shuffling around. And I understand that Woodson wants its space back, but where those folks go has to be thought out very carefully. Slicing up and shoving here and shoving there. It's not just a matter of counting classrooms. You also have to count the seats in the classrooms, because rooms can be larger or smaller. And how much construction do you do to change Plum to meet the needs of other parts of the whole ACE portrait? So I think it needs to go very slowly and very carefully, and it's kind of being rush, 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 because the catalog has to come out and planning has to be provided, and courses have to be determined, or placement for the courses. So I'm not a happy camper about what's going on, frankly. And so we've, you know, we try to serve an advocacy position because the folks we're taking care of are not in the advocacy vein. They're busy surviving, and the programs help them survive.
Okay.
We're watching carefully. And we're trying to make some sort of a, you know, a connection and get the information, but it, it seems to be in a very scrambled egg operation.
Okay, Ms. Darnett Kofex, and then myself, and then we need to wrap up. Ms. Darnett Kofex?
Lois, thank you for your comments, and thank you for your passion and dedication to this committee for so long. We really do appreciate you. Brian, Karen, thank you also for being here, and any other committee members who are here, thank you for that too. My questions have been answered. Mine were about the overlapping services with the county as well as self-sustaining programs. So I do look forward to the audit on, on ACE and to see where we can go. Mr. Moon started with the comments that, you know, the cuts we made in the past year were, were due to, we were making budget cuts everywhere, and we, you know, included student services, you know, made class size a spare, but we've done, we've done a lot. You know, this is the first time we've had a fully funded budget in many, many years. And, you know, based upon what we see in the audit, I would, I, I think it's a no-brainer to support your second recommendation to ask for the grant, you know, the Grants Department to look at this and see ways we can, you know, help you. And, you know, but A may, may also be willing to support Recommendation 1, again, seeing what happens, you know, based upon what we see from the audit. Because Lois, I think, you know, while things change, things stay the same, right? You know, when your parents came and, and that great, and Karen spoke about it, that great wave of immigration that was happening then, and this is the way oftentimes through adult education, that those families got their education, you went through public schools, and now you have your grandchildren going to some of the most prestigious. That, that's a very similar story to, you know, my, my story and many other people in this, you know, first, my father was first generation and I'm second, my children are third, so. And, and community, and, and kind of adult and community education was part of what my family used as well. So I, I thank you for that. I think it's important that we, as a board, understand that and know that and say that this part of education, you know, we are, we are a K through 12 system, but we have, you know, the bandwidth on both sides, which, which help us to make a better community. And one of my other colleagues mentioned one Fairfax, I think this is one of those programs. As long as we're doing the due diligence, you know, we, we did get to a point where we were, like you said, we, we offered many, we, we would get the catalogs, and there were duplicate, duplications between, but we've done some of those things. So as long as we're continuing to do that and we continue to see the need in certain members of our community for this, I definitely think it's something that we, you know, as long as we can have people who need it, families who need it. And, you know, I also put a plug in for driver's ed. It, I, everybody knew that you should get this one, you know, you should do the Fairfax County one. I drove to a neighboring school, two schools over, because I couldn't get one in my high school. This was two years ago for my daughter. So, and best teacher, amazing, and, you know, so thank you. That's my own personal experience with it. But as I said, I'll, I'll be interested to see. I appreciate all that you've done, and I really think, as a board, I hope we can really look at the history of why we existed. We need to continue to make changes and to make ourselves a successful program, but, but there are definitely opportunities here for our community that I think are very worthwhile and worth sustaining.
Thank you.
Ms. Stras, could I have just 30 seconds? Are they very quick? 30 seconds. 30 seconds. Then I, I need to, you know, Superintendent, you know, heard me say this multiple times, but I want to say this to the members on ACE Advisory Committee. The staff has provided responses to one of my budget questions, it's budget question number 29 regarding redesigning of adult high school. Am I planning to closely monitor enrollment? And, and I want to see how by cutting $1.1 million by redesigning, we're going to have more enrollment, more opportunity for students. I mean, that's got to be amazing. I want to see that happen, but I need to see the numbers.
Okay, I'll take my turn. We're delighted in Herndon because we're getting more. The combination of, of ESOL, of ACE, of adult completion and opportunity neighborhood, because the Reston-Herndon community is extremely in need of basic ESOL, high school completion and work readiness. So I know that a number of programs are being relocated. We're going to use the vacant Kmart space, correct? And other spaces, yeah. So we are actually expanding with combining all the services. And so we are very appreciative. And, and I think the, the combination of the programs that are coming to the Reston-Herndon area will serve the community much better than what we've had. So we're growing. We like that.
Okay.
Thank you. The one piece that I think in the county, including ACE and everybody else, that we need to continue to figure out how to expand and work, and it is that workforce readiness. All these committees and lots of ideas, and we hear from the state, we have all these, you know, jobs that we can't fill. And ACE has always been the, the home for apprenticeships and trades. And then I hear about how these jobs are going unfilled, and so I, I, I think we're missing a population that needs us, and I don't think we have figured that out very well. I would love to see Behind the Wheel expand tenfold. You have the best program. I could never get my kids into it, and it is, quality-wise, much better than anything that the private providers provide. And I think I will leave it there, but I think a lot of the workforce development stuff, combined with ESOL and, and high school completion, that I think that there are gaps, and I don't know the answer to it, but I think that that is part of, as we go forward, how to make use of the services that we have. And the advantage that ACE has is that your staff are educators, they are trained educators. They are not online whatever. So, so that your base comes with much better professional skills and the ability to serve often clients that have very specific and basic needs. So with that, I, I think we need to continue to go forward and figure out how we do expand with this.
One of the reasons we were talking about increased funding is, and Karen can explain this a little more technically, is when the regular K through 12 faculty get an increase for us to do like increases with our faculty, we don't get an increase in the transfer.
Right, right, I know.
So it's coming out of-
That's right.
-imagination.
Right.
And you, you can lose good people.
Right, and this is, this is why this audit report's going to be very important, because I think the services that you offer are critical and that we continue to evaluate and figure out where we, where we fill in. So I think we will be looking forward to the reports. In your case, with overhead cost, yeah, I think that's, that is something we need to take into consideration.
To build on what Mr. Moon has said, when he starts doing his arithmetic, you know, per-person cost, ACE provides the biggest bang for the buck, and it touches so many lives in very different ways that are not just strict classroom kind of thing. It's a kind of hope thing in there and access to, to dreams.
Right, very much.
Which improves one's quality of life.
Okay, well, thank you all very much, and as I say, we are looking forward to the audit report as well. It'll give us a lot of good information for this year, because we put in additional money at the, at, at year-end last year. So we will be, you know, considering, make sure we figure out how we're moving forward. So thank you all very much, and we take to heart, we know that there is discomfort with what is going on, with what's going to go where and building some classes. We've heard that, so we'll wait to see how the task settles. You're important to us. Thank you all very much. Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes.
Thank you for having us.
And the next will be fate. Thank you.